Good evening, everyone. My name is Les Leinbarger. I'm Executive Director of Communications for Nacogdoches ISD. And welcome to our board meeting tonight. I'm going to say a couple of things before I turn it over to Board President GW Neil. Obviously, these are special circumstances we're operating under tonight. And this meeting is being conducted online thanks to a waiver provided to us, provided to the state by the governor and the Attorney General's office. So please be patient with us as we go through this. We're going to go ahead and get the meeting started here. And Mr. Neil will read the intro into the meeting. And then the board will adjourn to a closed session, which will take place in another online meeting with just the board. And when they do that, when they go to that other meeting, I will shut down this particular online meeting. We will return at 6:00 PM to continue the rest of the open session of the board meeting. And that will take place with the same meeting ID that you use to log into this particular meeting. So, Mr. Neil, I turn this over to you to get started.
Good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees by video conference order. A quorum of the following board members present. GW Neil, Mr. James Mottoya, Dr. Tyrell Gromon, Reverend James Irvin, Mrs. Pam Fitch, Mr. Fauci Newman, Ms. Mindy Winslow. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws for the extent necessary to allow telephonic, video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathering in a central fiscal location, we do have a quorum and antennas at this meeting via video conference or telephone call. We're meeting by use of Zoom software application, which allows for two-way communication for members of the public. As it would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on meeting notice, but raised string to speak during a public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. If you'd like to provide a comment at a future meeting conducted by the video conference or the telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting policy. All the other meeting procedures will be adhered to the board adopted procedures to extend further. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. This Zoom software application allows for people to view and enact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call Officer Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at tma@agtexas.gov. Thank you. Now, the board will now conducting exactly closed session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Inaction the board wishes to take as a result of discussions. And the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. It is now 5:04 PM. The board is now... Thank you. Thank you. The board is now reconvening open session at 6:00 PM. Public comment? We did not receive any requests for public comment prior to the deadline of 4:00 PM today. Well, we're going to discussion and action item. We will now proceed with the discussion action agenda. All items listed will be discussed and acted on separately. First, we begin with budget amendments. Mrs. Barbara, would you pause for the budget amendments?
Good evening, President Neil and our Superintendent Fraley, board members. I would like to go with the budget amendments. So if you're ready, I'll go to budget amendment A, Budget Funds Received for Donations. We received a small amount of donations, but unfortunately, I knew we had the donations, but I don't have the details on it yet. So I'm bringing the budget amendment to you. The details will come next month.
Thank you.
Budget Amendment B, Budget Increase in MAC and CHARDS revenues as well as the 8% fee to MBS. We're also going to... But we've received, we are planning on receiving 105,000 more than what was originally budgeted. MBS is the company that files these and gets these revenues for us. They charge 8% fee. So that is the 8,400 increase to general administration. The rest of the funds are going to several different things. One of them being, we bought a mobile lift. That is the function 33 Health Services for 19,425. The 8,960 for data processing services. We have an employee that is out on FMLA and we have another employee that is acting as the coordinator. And that is a temporary supplement to her salary. And the rest will be going to facilities acquisition and construction. Budget Amendment C. We refunded our 2010 bond. This is to account for that sale of those bonds and then the purchase of the new bonds. So you'll see an increase and a decrease. This is going to provide a savings over the years. This was presented in a meeting several months previous. And that concludes the budget amendments. Do you have any questions?
Board, do we have any questions to comment at this time?
Mr. Neil?
A motion at this time to approve of the budget amendments. The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitch. Do we have a second?
This is Mindy. I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second approval of the budget amendments. All in favor of approval of the budget amendments, we vote by sign of aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Board, these following board members voted aye for approval of the budget amendments. GW Neil, James Mottoya, Tyrell Gromon, Pastor James Irvin, Mrs. Pam Fitch, Mr. Fauci Newman, Ms. Mindy Winslow. You announce the decision. Budget amendments approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Barbara. The next item is consideration of... Miss Barbara, did I finish? Miss Barbara, okay.
Yes, I am.
It's consideration of... Thank you. Consideration concerning COVID-19 virus. Board, we have a resolution there that you have had an opportunity to consider. Attorney Kala Kucheski helped us draft the resolution, give the superintendent authority to over the following items, the items that were listed to consider. So any of those voted, any in discussion on that? I will allow the superintendent and work the next few weeks to make the transition and make the decision for the district and also with the transition with Dr. Trujillo.
Yes, sir. I had two questions. This is Pam.
Yes, Pam.
My first question is, is this typical of one of you guys? School districts within the state are also approving or considering. And then my second question will be, what time name does this cover?
Thank you, Mrs. Fitch. Mr. Fraley, I may need to have an... I'm sure that I think this is typical. There have been others very similar, typical. But for his timeline, Mr. Fraley, you want to add any comments there?
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Am I coming through okay? This is pretty much on par with what Mrs. Kucheski has done with a number of their client districts. And basically, this ends once the emergency declaration has been determined, either by the governor or by, if we feel that it will be determined by the district. So this is a, it's tied totally to the situation. Once we get through this virus issue, then this authority that you're approving now goes away.
I was going to say something here. Leadership Tasby, that came up a couple of days ago. There was a concern by just a couple of people because most of the people already had this in place. They did an emergency meeting and voted for it. There was only one person that says there was a problem and the problem was perceived overspending. And I don't see, this is an emergency. We've got to trust the judgment of the people in charge. And I certainly trust Mr. Fraley and Dr. Trujillo.
I would add also, if you look under the further resolved statement, that last line number four, those type purchases and whatnot should be reported to the board at the next regular board meeting, at which time the authority, unless it is approved to extend, does expire.
You said, Mr. Fraley, is there anything in here that you could point out that would be typical with other districts?
Okay, I'm getting some feedback. I'm not quite... Can you say it again, Mrs. Fitch?
Yes, you said this is typical, but other districts are considering. Could you point out any differences, any substantial changes in this from the norm?
The only difference is item four, where it talks about what the issue is. We've had this in place in terms of, depends upon what the crisis is. We've had it for hurricanes. I've been through several times with hurricanes and... But never for an epidemic like this, or I guess the term is pandemic, right? So we didn't really ask for anything unique in here from what is pretty standard. Mrs. Kucheski, I talked about, there are some challenges, questions coming up regarding grading, promotion, and graduation. And I said, let's not put that in there. Let's keep that with the board. So options for us in terms of graduation requirements and of course exams and how you're going to give credit, those types of things. Those things are still under the direction of the authority of the board to approve or not approve.
I'm just wondering, is there any monetary tied into if we have to continue at this pace with paying our input stuffs? Because if we, I understood that if we had the virus within our district, that there might be some federal funds that we might be able to tap into. Is that correct or not?
Having the declaration, as I understand it, having the declaration of a statewide emergency gives us access to a lot more resources. That was something the government worked out with the president there. It's my understanding from my conference calls with TEA that they'll do everything that they legally can do to hold us harmless financially. We do have the virus in our community now confirmed, at least one case. There may be others once they get more testing available. So right now, the commission is asking us not to have any concerns about funding and reimbursement. The big thing is documentation of additional costs regarding our response to this pandemic. We're using buses and other vehicles to transport food. So that would not come out of the food, out of the transportation allotment. That would come out of the emergency nutrition funding for reimbursement. But to document it, Mrs. Thacker, I think he's done a great job of getting out and Ms. Barbara, they're doing a great job, I think, of putting in place protocols to document these types of things.
Board, any other questions or concerns? Board, at this time? The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the board approve the resolution of the Board of Trustees concerning COVID-19 virus as presented.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion, second approval of the resolution of the Board of Trustees concerning COVID-19 virus as presented. Board, all in favor of approving of the motion? Will you vote by sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The board approve the following board members in favor of the resolution. GW Neil, James Mottoya, Tyrell Gromon, Pastor James Irvin, Mrs. Pam Fitch, Mr. Fauci Newman, Ms. Mindy Winslow. Thank you. For the next item on the agenda. It's an exciting time for the district. And we're excited by the opportunity to hire superintendent of schools. Before we do that, we're going to open the floor for a motion at this time to hire superintendent of schools for Nacogdoches ISD. Someone?
Mr. Neil?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mottoya?
I move that the Nacogdoches Independent School District hire Dr. Red Trujillo at the permanent superintendent of schools effective April 6, 2020, and authorize the board president to sign the contract on behalf of the board.
Mr. Neil?
My second.
We have a motion from Mr. Mottoya, second from Mrs. Fitch. Well, motion second. Board, all in favor of approval of Dr. Trujillo's contract as superintendent of schools? Will you vote by sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Board, members in favor of GW Neil, Mr. James Mottoya, Tyrell Gromon, Reverend James Irvin, Mrs. Pam Fitch, Mr. Fauci Newman, Ms. Mindy Winslow. Boys, you announce the decision to hire Dr. Trujillo as superintendent of schools for Nacogdoches ISD.
Mr. Neil?
Congratulations. I just want to make this comment.
This is us standing up.
Great. I am thrilled to have Dr. Trujillo on board as our superintendent. We're excited to get him started as soon as possible. With the understanding, we understand the public education as yesterday here in Nacogdoches and across the nation has been disrupted by the coronavirus. Also, I want to take a moment to thank our school board for its hard work and dedication during this process. Board, thank you all. Completing the search and hire required extra time from board members and they showed their dedication and willingness to work for what's best for the district. Board, you placed a lot of hours into this process and we thank you for that. Especially thanks to our communities for supporting the board, serving on focus groups, completing online surveys to provide input and developing superintendent's profile. And then also, thank you to Arrow Search Firm, Dr. Russell Marshall and Dr. Jim Dunlap for their leadership and accepting ownership in the process for Nacogdoches ISD. They just own Nacogdoches. It was part of them. Finally, I'd like to state, Mr. Fraley, I am without words express my appreciation to you for returning home, providing leadership to both the board and the district. And thank you very much. Any comments?
Mr. President, I would have, I'd like to take two, couple of minutes if I may.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
You know, as you recall, about three years ago, we were looking for an interim superintendent. And as a group, team of eight, we threw some names around. And finally, you, Mr. President, mentioned Mr. Fraley's name. Personally, I did not know anything about Mr. Fraley. However, some colleagues have heard of him. When we requested a visit with Mr. Fraley, he graciously accepted it. I asked one of the board members to visit and be a part of that first group that met Mr. Fraley. Unfortunately, I had that privilege. Through my visitation with Mr. Fraley, I learned about visions, his leadership, and philosophy. And I became convinced that Mr. Fraley was the best and excellent choice for the district at the time, and anytime, actually. I vividly called first meeting. After the meeting was concluded, I took his hand and looked at him. I said, thank you for giving us this opportunity and I hope you accept the job. And it will be a tough... It's that's, and so we will see. As you recall, at the time, we have a lot of issues to deal with in the city. The city and Nacogdoches ISD and happy parents, teachers leaving and lack of... To me, it was most difficult job to recommend. However, I look as if I designed a gown for girls. And quickly, I learned that Mr. Fraley was fully equipped and had the right tools. And I realized he believed for the best thing to do, the time for the best thing to do is before, is between yesterday and tomorrow. He quickly organized a group of people and visited with everyone, gained the trust of board and community, and passed the bond. Mr. Fraley, I personally believe the man that doesn't do the job or didn't do the job has no responsibility. Saying that, sir, you are responsible. Positive changes with the NISD community as well as NISD is beyond imagination how soon it took place. Personally, I am a bit outspoken and at times I think I know everything. However, at the presence of Mr. Fraley, I always exercise Mother Nature's law. You can shut your ears, but you can shut your mouth. Mr. Fraley, thank you for all you have done for our city and specifically for NISD. Your footprint would last for a long time. One of my best experience and gain as being a board member is getting to know you and hopefully you will consider me as a friend. As your departure, I think we have found a high caliber person to be replacing you. And I'm sure he will follow your guideline and what I learned from him. And through the interviews, I think is highly qualified and he takes us to the right place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach.
When I first... I think we had a lot of the same visions. And I can honestly say that part of your heart is a social worker. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I would like to address Dr. Trujillo. Dr. Trujillo y su esposa Deborah demuestran unidad. Podemos confiar en ellos, los tienen corazones de oro. Dr. Trujillo and his wife Deborah demonstrate unity. We can trust them. They have hearts of gold. Welcome to Nacogdoches.
Thank you. Finally, and comment, you know, in 2018, Mr. Fraley, Nacogdoches received a gift in the name of Alton Fraley. You know, you provided leadership, you provided vision, you encouraged me for the board, the district, and the community. What was so important to me, you developed a team of one. And one of the board members put it, and we can just go on saying one thing, but one of the board members simply put it, thank you for your service to this district. And at this time, Dr. Trujillo, we'd like to bring you into the meeting, to your boardroom.
Mr. Neil?
I know you're there. Can we bring you in? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fraley.
Yeah. As Dr. Trujillo is ready to come forth, I want to, first of all, congratulate Dr. Trujillo. I've had a great time visiting with him and have heard great things about him from folks I respect. And so I do believe that great things are in store for Nacogdoches with his leadership. And I do wish him well and I'll be available to him at his call. Want to thank the Board of Trustees for the opportunity to come back home and serve and to just really have a good time in my hometown. It's been a lot of fun. We've had some moments that we've worked through together, but it's been a great team to work with the board. I just really appreciate everyone. And of course, Brother Neil, on the personal note, you know, we go way back. And let's not tell everything we know. But we go way back and I greatly appreciate your professionalism in this context. I appreciate the personal friendship as well. And to all the members of the board. And I wanted to, again, reach out to coaches, especially right now, because I know, Coach, that, you know, you had a lot of questions when I first got in there, but it's been tremendous watching us grow together. And Mr. Mottoya, I think your comment about me having the heart of a social worker, I think is the highest compliment I could ever get. And I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that. And so, thank everyone for that. And I must thank my team. I got to call out Holly Anderson, just tremendous person. It's been just an honor and a privilege to work with you and to know you, ma'am. And to all the guys on my cabinet, you know, Brother Martin, Dr. Hill, Ms. Barbara, and then Brother Leinbarger, my brother from Arkansas. It's been a tremendous honor and privilege and pleasure working with each and every one of you. To all the principals who have hung in there with me as well. Thank you for what you've done, what you continue to do. And I want to publicly thank all the staff, all the teachers, the food service folks, facilities guys and all that, and transportation and just everyone for all you're doing during this very trying time. How you've gone above me on the call of duty and this is not the first time. I would pray, but it probably will not be the last time either. So I just want to thank everyone, the community as well. Please welcome Dr. Trujillo. He comes from a good place, I do believe. So please welcome him with open arms. Give him all the support he'll need, to give him the space he needs. Allow him to grow with us, with you. And I just think that good things will happen if we allow his leadership to take root there in Nacogdoches and your leadership as well. So again, thanks to everybody. Appreciate everybody.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. Trujillo, you, before we join you, you want to come into your boardroom? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We're happy to have you. Any comments you want to make to, you're welcome to do that.
Absolutely. First and foremost, to the community of Nacogdoches. I'm going to tell you, I have the privilege of meeting these wonderful folks that you've put as volunteers to serve your community in the best interest of your kids, our children in Nacogdoches. And I will tell you, the passion and the drive in each and every one of them is what got me to keep coming back and wanting to impress them and let them know that I am that man for that job for Nacogdoches. And so, congratulations to the community for this tremendous board that they have to serve on behalf of their children. And to the board members that are there. You will see nothing but greatness in what I will provide for you. And I will tell you, you take a look, I'm looking at, I kind of scrolled back in these pages and I saw, I see folks from Plainview, from Duncanville. And most importantly, just most recently, I see my Grand Prairie folks. And I'm going to tell you, each and every one of us are greater because of the people that have come into our lives. And we take them with us in our lives and we've become greater. And the amazing thing is, here I am into the next adventure into Nacogdoches. And we take them with us in our lives and we've become greater. And the amazing thing is, here I am into the next adventure into Nacogdoches. And I will be that much greater coming into Nacogdoches and going through this. I'm, I'm fairly certain that the amazing teachers, the administrators that are there within that district. Have so many more opportunities and and the greatness is yet to come. Right now, we are in a state of fear and unknown, but I will tell you, this will pass. And when this passes, we will meet in this, to our parents, we're gonna meet the needs of all of our children in Nacogdoches. At their point of wherever they are and get them where they need to be at so that we can have academic success. And also social success where they can have the relationships. I know they, I know they miss their teachers. I know they miss their peers, but to the kids that are out there, you'll be back in school before you know it. And, and to the teachers, we're finding out so much about what we can do. At this point, when we have to use Zoom and go to meetings and all the different tools that are out there. And most importantly, and I do not want to forget this, is Mister Freely. It's tremendous honor, sir, to. Come in at your, in your wake. You've done a tremendous job. I will tell you that. Nacogdoches is better, in a much better place because of you, sir, coming in and doing some amazing things with this board. I, I take the baton and I will not let down the children of Nacogdoches, the community and the seven board members that are here, that we will do amazing things. So thank you so much, Mister Neil, for this opportunity and I look forward to the adventures. That my wife and I, by the way, you saw her come up here. I'm gonna ask her to step up here again. This is my wife, Deborah. We're both educators and so it's something that we're excited and in our core. And so we, we love this opportunity. To come into the great first city of Nacogdoches. So we're excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doctor Hill and Mrs. Hill. We're looking forward to seeing you all. Thank you all. Thank you. Boy, we have one item left on the agenda and that's to adjourn. Can we have a motion?
Mister Neil, it is my pleasure to make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's my partner right there.
We're adjourned, boy. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Freely.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I am getting ready to bring this meeting here to an end. Thank you all very much again.